Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A thin crowd tonight. No waving flags, no -- hopefully no blood spilled on the floor. Might be one of those ho-hum meetings. But we're about ready to start. We've got a quorum. Three of our worthies are here. Brian, I guess, was he going to be here?
We hadn't heard anything that he wouldn't, so I assume he will be.
So Mr. Cronquist is excused, absent, family difficulty. And so let's just go to work. It's 7:00. And would everyone join me in a flag slot, please?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice.
Okay. Ah, thank you. Let's see, I kind of did a half a roll call. Our Public Works Director is not here tonight. Mr. Kay just came in.
Mr. Kay?
Mr. Kay, Cronquist. Kay.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just received a message from Counselor Quigley, and he will not make tonight's meeting.
Okay, so Counselor Quigley's excused, absent. All right. And Counselor Cronquist is here. Okay. Let's see. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? If none, any declarations of ex parte contact, conflicts of interest, bias, anything else? No? Okay. Presentations, comments from the public? Anyone? I have no green slips tonight, but that usually doesn't slow some of them down. So, anyone? If not, let's go to the consent agenda. October 1st, 2018, City Council minutes.
I move the approval as written, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second, please? A motion to approve --
Second.
A motion and a second now to approve the City Council minutes on the consent agenda. Is there anything else there? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none will declare the motion passed and the consent agenda passed and part of the public record. There are no public hearings tonight. There's no unfinished business. New business is an under -- oh geez. Intergovernmental agreement for a bus shelter. Mr. Campbell, a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet is a staff report regarding a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city and Carts. And here is Representative from Carts, Ted Stonecliff. So do you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. As Keith said, my name is Ted Stonecliff. I'm a planner for Chariots. We operate the Chariots Regional Bus System in Marion and Polk Counties. And we're here to request the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Salem area mass transit district, which owns and operates the Chariots system in Salem and also the regional networks in Marion and Polk Counties. Little bit of history about our service. We work Carts until about a year and a half ago.
Sorry.
That's okay. Before that, we were called Wheels. We rebranded to Chariots Regional so that people would recognize that it's part of the Chariot system about a year and a half ago. And Stateon has been a good partner with us. We have been serving your community for at least 17 or 18 years. And our most popular stop is on First Street. Right now, it's located right in front of Safeway, but we're looking for a location where we can place a transit shelter where people can wait to get on the bus. We've had some issues with local property owners trespass problems at the bus stop. So our idea and proposal is to move the stop to the Public Works Building, just a couple of blocks to the north on First Street. And there, we have about 15 to 20 riders per day getting on at that stop. So it's fairly popular. We would also move the stop that would be going towards Mill City and Gates in that general vicinity. So let me tell you about the IGA. In general, we have agreements with all of our rural entities that we have a shelter located there. We just don't have the resources to have our own maintenance staff go out and maintain those shelters. And therefore, we ask the cities to clean them up, and if there's any damage, that would be repaired as well. We pay for the installation of the shelter. It's just an ongoing burden for you, but it's really a benefit for all of your citizens. It is public transportation, open to everybody. And with the coming of new funding in 2019, we will be implementing Saturday service. So that's a benefit to everybody in Marion and Polk Counties as well. Are there any questions that I could answer?
Yes. What's it cost to ride the bus to Salem?
It's $2.25 for adults, and if you qualify for our reduced rate, it's $1.50.
Okay. And there's how many trips a day?
We have four round trips per day currently, and that is set to increase with our increased funding that's coming next year.
Okay.
But probably one more trip, so a total of five round trips on the weekdays and two or three trips on Saturdays.
Okay. I see the bus stop about, oh, must be 8:00 or so down by the Circle K on East Washington.
Yes. We have two stops in town. One is there on Washington Street, and the other is on First Street.
Okay.
And the other stops the Transit Center, the parking lot.
Correct. Technically, that's outside of the city limits, so I wasn't including that, but you're absolutely right.
Oh, they stop at that?
Parking lot right up.
Yeah, okay. Good, all right. And expanded service to come?
Yeah. As I said, Saturdays will be something that we've never had before on the regional system, and we're really excited to roll that out. It won't happen until September of 2019. Our funding just isn't coming until then, so.
Done any thinking about light rail?
Not in the near future, no.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question.
Certainly.
So with this shelter, with the building, this shelter, will that be the only transit stop in town that is, provide shelter from the rain?
Yes, we did look into having one for the stop going towards Salem on Washington Street. However, with the current location, the county maintains Washington Street, as you probably know. And we weren't able to move the shelter out of the sightlines that would take it, to make it safe for those right-turning cars from those side streets, so.
So during the worst of winter, do you expect the shelter on Washington, I mean, yeah, on First Street, to grow, the amount of people that catch the bus there?
Possibly. It is a large shelter there, six by 12 feet, and so a group of 10 would be able to congregate in there comfortably. But in general, we have maybe five or six people getting on with every trip, so we're not concerned about capacity.
Okay, all right, wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions, folks?
What would be estimated maintenance costs or problem? These are like the old TriNet shelters. Are you repurposing those, I assume?
No, these are shelters that we had elsewhere in the system. I think this one might have been in Monmouth, to be honest, and we are repurposing it here. So they are owned by the district. They have another 10 years or so left in their life, and then we would be looking to replace them. But that would be our expense, yeah.
Okay, thank you. There are, okay, we can, there are several possibilities here. Approve the proposal, approve it with changes, additions, modifications, reject the proposed or take no action, which folks like to do.
Mayor, I move we accept it as written.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the proposal, an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Salem Mass Area, Salem Area Mass Transit District, thank you, for a proposed bus shelter at the City of State and Public Works located at 1820 North First Avenue. Is there any other discussion?
Nope.
Let's go ahead and vote on this. And Alyssa, I think we'll spare you tonight and not have you poll the council on all these things. All in favor, say aye, please. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none will declare the motion passed, and we're going to go ahead and sign that intergovernmental agreement. And thank you for coming out tonight. And, yeah, these are good things. It provides transportation for folks that might not be able to handily get back and forth, especially to Salem. And more mass transit takes people out of cars. Yeah. Now think about light rail on your way home.
Or Hank's, can you have a Humvee service?
Yeah. All right, what's next? Reclassification of Finance Director, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, we have an item before that, actually. The award of the contract for consulting services.
Oh, wait a minute. Ooh, missed one. That's what happens when you have these loosely run meetings.
I don't want Dan to miss out on his chance to talk.
Award of a contract for consultant services for economic development strategies. Mr. Fleishman, thank you for being here this evening.
My pleasure, thank you. So Mayor and Council, the issue before you is whether to award a contract for consulting services. We have a number of times discussed the issue of hiring consultants to help the city create some economic development strategies. Back in July, the city issued a request for proposal, and we received absolutely no response from those who received the RFP. In September, it was issued again, and we received one proposal from the Bridge Economic Development Group from Portland, who will be working with two other consultants, the McKenzie Group and Leland Consulting Group. Staff has reviewed the proposal. We are very comfortable with the services to be provided. We've contacted some references, and with that, are recommending to award the contract to Bridge Economic Development. I believe you've got a copy of their proposal in the packet, as well as the staff report.
Uh-huh. Dan, that's a fairly busy topic in our small corner of the world. Active topic. These folks are just going to add to, bring some more light?
They will be doing some analysis of our comparative advantages and disadvantages. They will be looking at our land use regulations, our utility rate structure, the range of incentives that the city has in place and those that we may want to consider to attract additional businesses. It's been probably, it's close to 20 years since there's been a new building constructed in our industrial area. There's been, there is property that's been on the market at least for 15 years that is still out there on the market. So the question is, what can we do to attract some additional business and jobs and tax revenue to the city? And what is it that the citizens of the city would like to see happen and are willing to do to attract the businesses we want?
Again, Dan, do you see this group, you know, they, we don't know what, we know what they think they're going to do. Do you see them incorporating some of the work that these local groups, let me say groups, there are more than one, have done to encourage development and change and whatever downtown and just in the community?
Yeah, I mean, the groups I'm assuming you're referring to are Revitalized Downtown Stateon --
That's one.
And the Chamber.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure who else is out there. But yes, I see that both of those organizations will have an integral role to play as we develop these strategies.
Okay, all right, good. You haven't, you're not aware of Hank's International Economic Development Group?
No.
Okay. Well, it's just being announced, so I'm not surprised.
He's looking for venture funding.
I'm sorry. Counselor Cronquist, please.
See, I actually worked with these guys at C E R D, Columbia, Clark County Economic Redevelopment when I was at Riverview Bancorp. And I'm looking at their website now. It's $100,000, and they're going to look at, present us with KPIs, assess our community, try to attract private development, which we're all trying to do, write up ECDV marketing, attract restaurants, and facilitate speaking engagements. I mean, I know, Dan, this is not to do on you, but it is $100,000 or $98,000 and change of taxpayers' money. And it's not my money or Hank's money or any of our money, unless it's Hank's company. What do they bring to the table that RDS, the Chamber, Columbia Council on Governments and others, all these organizations we're with do? What is unique, what's their elevator speech? I mean, I'm looking at it, but I'm not seeing any extra arrows in the quiver for the $100,000. I know that we need to kickstart Wilco Road Development, but you and I both know that the roadblocks of this town, I mean, Second and Florence can't be solved by these guys, things like that. I mean, the Porter-Lau building can't be fixed by these guys. What extra oomph do they bring to us for the money?
Good question.
Contrary to what you described, the role they would be playing, they will not be hired to attract businesses or call restaurants. They are being hired to assist the community, establish a vision and strategies for achieving that vision for what we want to see for economic development activity here in the city. So they're not being hired to be the city's economic development arm or business attractor. They're being hired to help us figure out what we want to do and what we're willing to do in order to get additional business activity here in the city. So what they will be bringing to the table is the expertise in looking at the businesses and the industries that are here, at the labor force, information that is available for the community and the area. As I said earlier, what our comparative advantages and disadvantages for different industrial sectors may be so that we, if we want to be, if the city says we want to be marketing the city, which the city hasn't done, that we know who to be targeting. And we'll be looking at our land use regulations, our utility rate structures, our public work standards perhaps, as to, and be making recommendations for changes that will make the community more attractive to the types of businesses that we say we want to attract.
Priscilla?
So I don't know if it's going to help you, Mark, but I actually have been involved with another project very similar to this, and it, no, I'm not saying this is, but it became invaluable to us because it was a kind of a third party that was able to come in, the groups that we're talking about, RDS, the Chamber, that. This is somebody that can look at the big picture, our whole town, and what all is encompassing in it, right down to things like utility rates and stuff like that. And to get that kind of big-picture information kind of laid out for you gives you such a much better foundation of where to go from there. Where do you build from there? Without having that big-picture foundation, it's really hard to set up a direction. You just say you have pieces. What we have right now, we have a lot of little pieces.
I agree. We lack the goal, we lack the overarching goal that Astoria had, but that was led by the Chamber, and then the private parties, and then the council, and everybody got on board, and that's how Astoria changed around. And Astoria had much the same situation we do with landlords who have owned properties for a long time, who don't necessarily make keeping up the old State and Shu repair building or the Porter-Lau building number one priority like it should be. And I don't, I mean, Dan, I know for a fact that, I've been looking at 34 cities like ours for a lot of reasons, that our system debt charges are right down the middle. And, you know, do we need, I mean, if we want to goose the economic development thing, we can change our system development, system debt charges. But we're right in the middle of the pack as we are, and are we going to spend $100,000 to be told that, you know, the rivers and rectourism for the canyon are great, our adjacent C22 is great, we have a lot of land that's developable, that's not in the urban growth boundary, that our streets are in okay repair? I mean, I don't know, and I'm looking at their site right now, what additional things they bring for the check? It's $100,000. That's a lot of money of the citizens that I'm going to have, somebody's going to ask me, why did you hire them? And I don't, right now, can say that they're going to engage us and facilitate us and assess us and come up with some KPIs and do a slot. But, well, let's see.
That is what they'll be doing, as well as leading community discussions about what types of business activity we want and what we don't want.
With the same 12 of us will come to all those meetings that already come. You know, how do they reach out and inspire more people?
We don't know yet.
I don't know.
That'll be part of the discussion we have with them as we develop the scope of work beyond what was in the RFP and their proposal. Because there are a couple of items that they talked about in their proposal that I want to discuss with them further that I haven't yet, about really what level of detail that data analysis will be available and whether it will be useful to a community of this size, or whether they'll just be looking at Marion County data, which, you know, I don't see what will be serving, you know. So we may cut that out of the work plan once we have that discussion.
Is it best to push us back for another meeting when we have those answers?
I don't see any purpose in doing that because we'll work out the work plan with them as we develop the contract.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Chris?
So this is, again, being relatively new to City Council. So if I understand Counselor Cronquist correctly, he had a business relationship with them prior, this particular consulting firm?
It was the Vice President of Marketing for a bank.
Oh, but not this group?
This group was one of the many, many people that were, Columbia River Economic Development Commission is the people that basically turned Vantucky into Southwest Washington, Camas, Washougal, what you see today for development, right? But this was a small portion of that group.
Okay. I was just, what concerned me was that if you have a business relationship with a vendor --
No, I have no economic development.
-- outside of City Council, whether or not that's a conflict.
That was well more than a decade ago.
Okay.
It was just an observation of what people bring to the table. You know, you look at their project schedule here, which is the next to last page or the last page, you know, they're going to manage the project, obviously, and they're going to assess us and come up with strategies, okay. They're going to draft a report, okay. They're going to do presentations, okay. They're going to write it up and then suggest code revisions. I mean, in eight weeks.
The other question I have is --
It's not fine, Dave, if you want to spend $100,000.
Have we, just out of curiosity, and this is a little off-topic from where we are right now, but did anybody go back to the ones that were interested but didn't submit an RFP to find out what it was about the RFP that they didn't, why they basically didn't respond?
No, we have not done that.
Okay. I'm just curious if it was, did we put, like, what the budget was, what the anticipated budget was in the RFP?
We did not.
Okay. So it could have been a range of this to that.
After the first time with no responses, we reached out and looked for people that we could contact beyond just putting it out for bids. So I know Dan had created a list, and we had contacted directly, correct, Dan?
Yeah, and somehow somebody got in touch with me who operates a website where proposals like this are listed, and I think that generated some interest. And it was seven to nine people who said, I'm interested, send me the RFP. And so, you know, an email went out to those seven or nine people saying, here's the RFP. It's the same as was issued in July, but we've got new dates for replying and for getting the work done.
My concern is, like, I'm on the fence, because I hear what Marcus is saying, Counselor Cronquist, because on one side, you know, I'm always concerned if there's only one person submitting, you know, a proposal, because then you have, you don't get to look at the different options of price and scope and value. But on the other side, I don't necessarily want to turn away the opportunity to have somebody come in and look at our city and where we can do better in attracting business, so, you know.
There definitely seems to be right now in the climate, and this is something beyond the City of State and meet with regional city managers, and it's a topic of discussion that's been ongoing and a concern, and Middle M Valley COG has been working on this as well, which is, local entities in smaller cities are having a hard time right now getting any bidding contracts. Portland seems to be the area that the big focus is on and where the money's at right now. And so, you know, we're not unique right now in this situation, and it is sort of frustrating, and we're not the only community, but, you know, not seeing more competitive bids because the market is such that they're just not outbidding for these projects.
Dan?
Me.
Mark, go ahead, or Priscilla, either one.
Dan, did you say when you had, when you first talked about this proposal, that they had worked with another city?
Bozeman.
That they had, this group had done?
I don't recall saying that, but they worked with the county. The county commissioners just adopted a set of economic development strategies within the past month or so, and they were the consultants that helped develop.
Okay. What I was wondering was if it would be possible to get someone that they've worked with before to show us what their end result report looked like, to find out if it's just what you say, a bunch of stuff that we already know, or if it's actually some kind of deeper information. Again, like, I also don't want to lose them if we, you know, but because I think that the fact that they're willing to meet with people in the community and maybe get, you know, that's kind of an ongoing thing, is getting people interested in what's happening and being able to share what they see as the vision of Stateon. And I value that, and I think that that's a great part of this that I wouldn't want to lose. And I don't know how to find out how, what their, what their report, what their end report is going to be like, because if, without that, I would still vote to move forward right now. That, I think that this is something that we need, and we need to move forward. But it would be nice to have an actual report that they've done on another community to see what was in it.
Who, if I may ask, Mayor, sorry, who were the reference, the references that they gave you? Were the other, you said one was a county commission?
One was Marion County. The other is the City of Bozeman, Montana. And the third is the Columbia River Economic Development Council, which is the Greater Vancouver, Washington.
So they've worked with all three?
Reference.
Mr. Mayor, just making a note that the proposal for services, what they're going to give us is two PAC meetings, that they're going to prepare the presentation and agenda, one community open house where they prepare and present agenda, up to five roundtable discussions where they'll facilitate it, a community survey via Survey Monkey, a summary, one planning commission presentation, and one city council presentation. And that's what they're going to give us. And it's all in the next to last page of their proposal.
Right. That is their response to task four of six, five, six tasks. They will also, if you look at the complete proposal, you'll see that they'll also be providing draft, a draft economic development strategy, draft transportation recommendations, utility recommendations, and then final reports as well as part of that. So it's not, you know, you need to look at the entire proposal.
Well, the other deliverables are final economic development strategy, word document and digital copy, final transportation analysis and memorandum, word document, final utility analysis memorandum and word document.
Dan, is it too simplistic to say that part of this would be putting some shine on the apple?
Yes, I think that would be too simplistic. I see that the, the two major valuable aspects of this project, one is to, is facilitating the community discussion about what type of development we want to see and what we don't, and also how to get there. And the other is the outside analysis that would be looking at what are the advantages we have here, what are the comparative disadvantages, and what, and from their perspective, what types of business development are we likely to see, and how do we facilitate that happening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I should note, this is, this was a council goal, this was a budgeted item in terms of the council goals. So it is up to the council, I mean, this proposal is really trying to meet that, and you guys can decide however you want, but I just want to say this is what brought this forward and this is why we're having this discussion.
None of us, I don't think, are opposed to economic development, doing anything possible to make this town a better town. I think that's a given.
Well, we've also had every, every once in a while, from time to time, just a comment, what do we want the community to look like, comes up. And it sort of hangs there, and then we go on to other things, but it keeps coming back up with our planning, with whatever else we do. What do we want the community to look like? And it's kind of in, for a while at least, in our hands, and we're free to start to try to shape it or let it go. Been like this for 50 years. Nothing wrong with it. Just put those horses away at night. Chris?
Mayor, Council, just one more question. It seems to me that the deliverables are also just an oversimplification of what it is that they have to provide, right? That's not the scope of work. So there's a whole lot of stuff, is my understanding, that they're going to be doing. The deliverables is just the documented things that they have to provide, like meetings. I mean, the meetings aren't the only things they're going to do, the report's not the only thing they're going to do. As I'm looking through this, there's meeting with business leaders, you know, transportation, gap analysis, that sort of stuff. So there's more to it than just the deliverables.
I think it's a good start for us.
I think it, as a matter of fact, it's a great start for us to, again, get that foundation that we can start building on to go from there. And I also think it does meet our, one of the goals that we came up with as a group for this year.
So we are confronted with a couple of options. One, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with bridge development, economic development, or two, to direct staff to modify and reissue the RFP.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that we move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with bridge economic development for an amount not to exceed $98,615.
My second.
All right. A motion and a second. To execute, to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with bridge development for a, for an amount not to exceed $98,615. Is there any discussion?
Is there any way, Mr. Mayor, we could include in this authorization, a requirement for them to provide to council more than just one presentation? Give us a roadmap on an ongoing basis of where they're going.
I'm not quite sure what you mean by an ongoing basis, because this is going to be a project that lasts only in, you know, a couple of...
Twelve weeks.
No, it's going to be more than 12 weeks.
Yeah, it's one, twelve weeks.
If you look at the project schedule, there, it'll be six months.
If they're a month, they could give us just a quick summary. And you can laugh, ma'am, but it's not, it's, the money doesn't belong to you. The money belongs to the people behind and around you. And when you're up here, if you're elected, people will ask you, why did you vote $100,000? And you need to ask that. And what I'm asking is, Dan, is there any way to ask these people to give us a summary at the six council meetings?
So...
A roadmap, but tell them how many, how, so we can tell other people how we're spending their money wisely.
So, Dan, you know, you said that you were going to meet with them about the contract and stuff. So I think that all Mark's asking is to ask if they could include the council in more than just the one meeting. I think that that's an honest, an honest question, a reasonable question.
It's reasonable, sure.
And I don't think that anything stands on that. If they say no, our vote still stands.
My hope is that they respond.
And I can include mention of what, of the monthly progress in my monthly staff report to council.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Are you folks ready to vote? Alyssa, would you go ahead and poll the council on this one, please?
Sure.
I was going to give you a break tonight, but...
It's all right. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Conquest?
Yes.
Counselor Ustleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. Thank you, folks. And now we get to reclassification of finance director, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council is aware, the city had engaged McGrath Human Resources to do a comprehensive classification and wage study for the city. We do anticipate with the new council in January, one of the very first items will be to discuss at length and to talk about the recommendations and to take a vision of what we want to take from that report or how we want to move forward from that report in terms of the recommendations. And we have bargaining with both our units coming up, both the police union and with Ask Me. So to have an understanding before we begin those bargainings and where we stand on some of these items. And so, like I said, I think the first meeting in January will really touch on this subject in more detail. What we're asking today is for, one of the recommendations, we move forward so we can move forward with looking to hire a full-time finance director, and that's to reclassify based off the recommendations from McGrath. So the information is in the council packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Administrator, what is the current salary for that position?
It's located in the...
Let me have your summary here.
It has the retirement eligible amounts from $5,949.47 per month to $7,593.20 per month. It's recommended to change range up to $6,684.87 to $85,3178.
What is the current salary for that range right now?
$5,900, it's in your fiscal impact, $5,949.47 to, depending on the step, $7,593.20.
Where does the incumbent stand on that step?
We don't currently have an incumbent on that step.
The last person who held that position, what was the pay?
I don't have that information. It would be in this pay range minus the cost of living.
Okay, so it was in, it was, yeah, okay, so it was in what, the current?
Yeah, it'd be in the current range. What McGrath says, said to us was that the salary was well below market and we'd have a challenging time to recruit or hire anyone to meet the qualifications of the position, which was what is bringing this forward and why we're asking to move forward now so we can begin the search for the finance director and get that position filled.
Okay. Who, right now, does that job description include preparing the budget? Because I know that's prepared by a third party at an additional expense right now.
That would be, that would be correct. We currently don't have a finance director, so we have a consultant who's been helping with the finance aspects of it and helping us prepare our budget. So that would eliminate the need for a consultant to move this and to hire someone who would have a fiscal background and a budgetary background.
And what do they ask you for the consultant ballpark?
It's less than this. I want to say it's right around $70,000 per year.
That's fine. That gives a value to this person. That helps us all support the hiring.
This, the starting rate here, the one being proposed, I don't know that you're going to get somebody even start there for that kind of a position. That's pretty low.
This is what McGrath had recommended based off of theirs and the reclassification of positions.
So when you hire someone, is it negotiable with them, then, within the range where they start, right?
Correct. So the $6,684.87 would be the low end, if the change is made tonight, to the $8,531.78 would be the high end of the salary, not including benefits.
That's not even $40 an hour.
I would say that there's job security and there are benefits and that can make it very, very attractive a position these days.
But I don't know, I own a business. You try and hire somebody with, even to enter your QuickBooks, let me tell you what they want to charge you. No, somebody who's going to take on the finance of this is going, is, if you get somebody qualified...
The average salary in America is $66,000 a year.
Yeah, that's not what I'm seeing.
Well, if we find that we're unable at this range, we can talk about what to do.
Okay, my point being is I don't think this is unreasonable, is my only point.
We're all saying the same thing. I think this is great because it also gives us ownership where the person preparing the budget is here. It's not necessarily a budget from another city that's been adjusted. It reflects us and I, let's, I'm well in favor of this.
Okay, good. All right. Other discussions?
Yep.
Thoughts about it?
Yep.
Let's see. The recommendation is either to, a motion to approve the reclassification as presented, do it with following modifications, or no motion necessary. What would you like to do?
Number one, please, sir.
Okay. A motion to approve the reclassification as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to go ahead with this. Any other discussion or thoughts? Okay. All right. Let's vote on this. This is a money issue, so let's, Alyssa, let's do it right again, please.
Sure. Counselor Conquest?
Aye.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ustleman?
Yep.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you. And let's go to staff and commission reports. Finance department report, this is probably from Cindy and Elizabeth and Randy, the accounting clerks and associate accountants, and, and it looks as like it looks.
Mr. Administrator, I assume that the decrease is due to the KPI?
Few people with payment extensions, interrupted service, fewer. Still one disconnected. Delinquent notices sent out, 500. Wow. About the same number going to landlords?
Yep.
Just about the same.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure.
So when the city is aware that a house is being lived in without electricity, are they paying attention to what's happening in that house as far as where the garbage is going, where the, if there's children living in the home, all of those issues? So...
I don't know if I can know the specific example, and Rich, I'm looking at you as well. I mean, we do have situations with various houses, including squatter situations, situations where young children are living there without proper water and heat, and those are issues that we deal with in various ways. And I know Rich is involved with that and other entities get involved as well.
I'm talking about this specific information. So since we have one house without electricity, is anybody aware of what the address of that house is and who's living in it?
That's water.
Oh, just water. Oh, that's right. Okay, well, but that's, that's still, yeah, water. That's still, that's still, that would still be an issue, right?
When they're brought to our attention, we do check into them. Very rarely does the person have their water cut off permanently. It's usually turned on fairly soon after that. If we're aware of them, we do check in to find out what the situation is, if there's kids, or if it's a landlord issue, then we address it the way we address the apartment complex.
Right. Or if there is some assistance and they're not aware of it.
Correct.
You know, so...
We refer them.
Right, yeah. So it's possible that this one service still not disconnected in August and the one in September is not the same.
Generally not.
Okay. Right, yeah, okay. If it were, though, someone would say something, right?
Definitely, yes.
Yeah, okay.
They're usually in our office fairly soon after if they're not able to get it, and we direct them to the appropriate resources.
Right.
Same kinds of concerns apply when we're talking about power shut offs. I know one family that hasn't had any electricity since May, and it's three adults. They're not, not, no children. They keep up on the water bill, I guess, and we, as a part of a veterans organization, we've tried to help and could not make much headway on it. Becomes really a pretty stiff penalty to go, to run a power bill up and then reconnect fees and whatnot.
The...
I don't know if they have power now. The last time I saw them, they didn't, and it's October.
The federal Low Income Energy Assistance Program money that comes out, I used to manage that money in Lane County, and I paid up to $8,000 to get somebody back on out of that money.
Wow.
That money's available in this county.
Wow.
And so they just need to hook up with the right people.
We all pay it as part of our power bill.
Through the LEAP program and Pacific Power also. Is that probably who it is, Pacific Power? Actually, every power company that we worked with was more than willing to, if they knew that there was somebody working with the people, to work it out. The electric bill was an easier thing to do than some other things. So the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, again, part of it may be the people that you're trying to help. And if they're, if they are unable to follow through or to fill out forms and do stuff like that, then that becomes the issue. Not that there isn't help out there for them, but their inability to access it or they're not wanting to access it, then that's very difficult.
Yeah, it really is. Yeah, Alyssa, yeah. Okay. Rich, police report.
Mayor and council, you have the statistical report for the month of September. Numbers are in line with where we'd expect them to be. I will let you know that two weeks ago, on Wednesday, we had a coffee with the cop on National Coffee with the Cop Day over at McDonald's. It was well attended and all those that attended seemed to have a good time enjoying interacting with the different officers.
Those 10 guys that hang out at McDonald's in the morning all wait for this all year long. You know that they do.
Yes.
You know that some of them were at my house like right after that, letting me know that they got their pictures taken again this year.
Yes.
With the cops. They're so excited.
The guy with the red, white, and blue hat, he came by me too.
Okay. Excitement in a small town. Whoopie. Okay. Thank you, chief. Anything else that's, that is it? Wildly exciting? Okay. Public Works Directors report. Shall we just read through that and see what, see what it has to show? They stay busy, that's for sure. What's next? Planning development. Ah, Mr. Fleishman's here tonight, so what's the good word?
Well, you've got my...
Well, you've got my report for activities last month. We are this close to being ready to announce the, to residents or owners of manufactured housing units in the city that do not own the land that the unit sits on, that our housing rehabilitation grants will be available. We're waiting for a final sign-off on all of the environmental review and other things. And I also want to remind the council and those in the audience that this Wednesday evening in the library, starting at 6:30, is a community open house on the update to the city's transportation system plan. The consultants that we've hired will be there with the presentation. Staff will be there. And the purpose is just to get feedback from the community on the assessment of the existing conditions and the projection for future conditions.
Okay, so that's Wednesday at seven?
That is Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 6:30 PM--
6:30.
--in the library meeting room.
Okay.
Dan, is that 5:30 or 6:30?
Dan, is there a virtual version? Because I will be--
There will be, there is a website. The presentation will be up there. There is, I believe there's a feedback form on it that the consultants have done. And I thought it was 6:30, but--
We're checking.
But I was checking, and I couldn't get on the city's website, sitting here. So hopefully, someone who's--
So keep talking for a second.
All right.
5:30, there we go.
It is 5:30, my apologies.
5:30, 5:30, good.
Yeah.
Okay. What else is, what else is going on?
I'm just going to be hanging around till then anyway, so it doesn't matter to me what time it is.
Something else is going on Wednesday. What is it? Is that, that RDS--
Library board meeting.
Are they going to have candidates?
No, there's a council--
Library board meeting is--
In my office.
Yeah, it's in your office, yeah.
When is that?
I appreciate your yield.
Nothing else going on Wednesday evening?
No.
Okay, all right. Oh, library director, Jenna.
Jenna, how'd the sale do?
The sale did very well. The mayor and council, your, my report and my stats are in front of you. I would like to let you know that on November 3rd, which is the first Saturday in November, we're partnering with Marion County Environmental Services to do a craft and art supply swap, so that people can bring their craft supplies that are their extra things and get a voucher to come into the swap early, and then we'll have it open to everybody after that.
Do you know the store's crap in Portland?
I've heard of it.
Go there, it's awesome.
Yep.
Okay. Questions for Jenna? Treat, bag, fun. October 31st, that's Halloween.
It is.
Whoopie. Candy for adults, no?
If Ken comes as the mayor, can he get a piece of candy?
I'm sure the mayor could get a piece of candy at the library.
There's got to be something, something goes with this job. Whoopie. Okay, thank you, Jenna. Anything else? No? I guess not. Presentations, comments from the public. All right. Yes, ma'am, please.
Paige, Quail Run Avenue, or Tuesday, Quail Run Avenue. I want to encourage the council to read their packet prior to the meeting. A lot of the questions that were asked tonight, the answers were clearly stated in the packet. I'm talking about the RFP that was put through for the economic growth. It was a little bit frustrating to hear questions that were in there, and then statements made at the microphone that were untrue because they hadn't read the packet.
Okay, Paige, I read the packet.
So--
You want to talk about this, Paige?
Uh, I--
Let her talk. No, let her talk.
Let her finish.
Please, go ahead.
I also want to encourage, this was my next thing I was going to say, which is perfect right now. I want to encourage the council to also make sure that they remember that community members should be treated with respect, especially--
Let her--
Especially saying things to them when they are not at a microphone, and they do not have the ability to come up to the microphone, because that is not the time for them to do that. So I am speaking to you, Councilor Conquest. I am quite offended by the way that you addressed me when I was not able to be at a microphone.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
Well, it's actually comments from the public, but you can make a quick response, please.
Ma'am, to sit in the audience and sigh and make facial gestures is not to respect your elected officials. You and I beg to differ on a lot of things. First of all, I do read these things. And secondly, as the mayor said, some of it did seem a lot like apple polishing. Thirdly, it's incumbent upon those who are elected to council to ask tough questions, not to be everybody's friend. I would appreciate respect from you as well. The only reason I responded to you is because you're like, and making noises like that, and you can review them on video and hear yourself. So the respect thing goes both ways. The second thing is, if the RFP for $100,000 of community money is a lot of apple polishing, a final word document, come on, that's apple polishing. And to ask them to give us checkups, intermediate reports, is just being responsible. So in the future, when you're here, I appreciate all candidates being here, if you respect me, I will respect you equally.
Okay.
We choose to disagree, that's fine. I do read these things, and I do read their bios, and that's why their website was up, so I could tell you that restaurant attraction was one of their six key points, key indicators, KPIs.
Mark, council, let's not beat this to death. That's fine. Thank you. Paige, thank you.
Thanks.
Nobody?
Yeah, maybe a jerk.
Well, there's business from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, we can avoid putting Rich on the spot, because before our next meeting is the K-9. So I have the information up. The spaghetti dinner for the K-9 fundraiser is Friday, November 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. So come and enjoy a delicious spaghetti dinner and help raise funds for the State and Police Department's K-9 drug program. And that's at the State and United Methodist Church at 1450 Fern Ridge Road Southeast. Did I do a good job with that, Rich? Anything you want to add?
Did an excellent job, so definitely come out.
Is it a pet-friendly event?
It's a, that's up to the church, but Dallas does, Dallas and Brody both go to that event, so it is a fun event.
Chief, had you guys ever--
Very well-attended.
Chief, excuse me, had you guys ever thought of just having a friendly dog mascot kind of thing? Somebody like Gus?
Are you wanting to get rid of Gus?
Loves everybody and--
A uniform and Gus aside?
Isn't, isn't picky about who he, you know, talks to, you know?
So I'd like to say something to you before you get done. Not about the spaghetti, when you're done with the spaghetti dinner thing.
Oh.
Yeah, just want to remind people that there's going to be another candidates forum tomorrow night at the Brown House. I don't even remember the time. Paige, you know, what, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30. So invite all of the people in the audience and all of the people up here that want to come to it, to come.
Kate, you got a potential for a quorum?
It's not something the city has been involved with, like we were with the other ones, so it's not really, it's outside the scope where the city could be concerned about a quorum.
Let me respond to that for a minute. Brazil, is everyone invited to that?
Mm-hmm.
Are all the candidates?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? I don't know. I don't--
It's a council debate, not a mayoral debate.
Oh, yeah, I have absolutely no idea. Yeah.
That's good. That's good.
See, I just started answering for you. I have nothing to do with setting this up. I know nothing about it.
Okay, okay.
So it's not, the mayors aren't going to be there?
I, the headline in the Brown House saying it's a council debate.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. So if you weren't invited, then I'm sure that has nothing to do with the mayors.
Well, the, that's, you know, that's where the voting is. That's where the focus really should be in these, in this election at least.
Yeah, I have, I just assumed it was everybody. That was my assumption.
It's the first time a mayoral race in years.
Well, it's all right.
Obviously, my assumption was exactly what--
It isn't much of a race.